That's the name of it. Yeah, he was thinking about wanting to. That's his. He's not one of them there.
Oh.
But that was his team. I think that.
30, 0%.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's like the labor act.
Welcome to the monthly work session. Today is February the 20th, 2018, and this morning we have a number of items that we'll be discussing. First off is Dr. Natalie Roca, who will come forward and talk about the renewal of the Sarasota Academy of the Arts Charter Agreement. Natalie?
Good morning, everyone. School Board members, Dr. Bowden. So you have a very busy agenda this morning, and first is my pleasure to bring to you the application for renewal for Sarasota Academy of the Arts. And I'll bring them up, this governing board of the school, and some of their school leadership are here with us this morning to present to you their requests for a renewal of their existing charter. You have seen the materials. If you will, I have just a couple brief moments to describe the process, the renewal process, a refresher for you, but also for the audience. We asked the applicants of a renewal to also complete a renewal application. You've seen the document is on the eAgenda. And basically, it's similar to the regular application process in that it covers area of academic, the academic programs, student enrollment, procedures for facilities. And this is their opportunity to also share with us not only their current standing, but also if they propose any changes moving forward to their charter school. The application and related materials become part of that new charter contract, so it's important for us to be clear about their intent moving forward. As you know, as the sponsor and school board, you are required to not only approve new applications, but also renewals, and also sometimes a non-renewal or a termination. And what the committee looked at, our fabulous, hardworking charter review committee, looked at are how well does the school provide services to students, not only just in compliance with statutory requirements, but also following the intent of their charter, their program, their mission. We do also look at their performance, their academic performance, and we look at how well they're providing services for ESOL and ESC kids. The committee not only looked at their application, but also we collect information from monitoring and audit results that we collected over the years. And staff went out this year, for example, to do an audit, a monitoring review of ESC and ESOL, and everything has been satisfactory. An important part besides academic performance is the school's financial standing, and our finance office did a review of all of their current financial standing and also evidence that they've adhered to all of the reporting requirements. Katrina and I went out this year to also look at documents at the school site, everything from pulling an HR record to see if they're in compliance, to reviewing the school facilities, and everything has been, they've been in good findings. We sent to you a four-page summary of the committee's work, and you can see that, hopefully you have it with you there. Basically, this is the fourth year of their five-year charter, and the school serves about 225 students plus in grades K through eight, and they'll go more in detail if you'd like. They do have about 30% of their students that are minority students, and 53% are economically disadvantaged. And let's see, what else? So basically, the finances were found to be in good standing, again, in compliance with everything. Their achievement, they have moved from, they started off as a C and moved progressively to a B and an A school with this last school grades. So congratulations to them on that. So with that, I will bring them up and let them present their proposal and have the discussion.
While you're doing that, I just want to make a quick comment. Bridgette Sigler, our chair, is not here. She's in Tallahassee, meeting with the governor today. She and Dr. Rachel Shelley are there, meeting with the governor relative to safety and security and some issues there. The other four of us are here, and I'm going to start to my right with Eric Robinson when we start questions, and then I'll give you like three or four minutes to ask a series of questions, and then we'll move around the room if that works for everyone.
Good morning. I'm Cecilia Blankenship. I am the principal of the school, and I've been the principal for five years. Dan Kennedy, chairman of our board, Joe Solano, who is secretary of the board, Rob McLean, vice chair, and Matt McHugh, who is our business manager, finance manager. If I could just tell you a little bit about the school over the five years, first of all, and before I even start, I want to say how pleased we are to be able to present today, and also to thank you as the board for the reception and the support that you give charter schools in Sarasota County. I've been talking to a lot of my friends and colleagues in other counties, and we feel so fortunate to be in Sarasota with the support of the board, and especially with Dr. Roca and Mrs. Ward. So with that, 2013, we started with 203 students. It was an adventure for the first year. The majority of our teachers came from other districts or from private school. Majority of our students came from private school or homeschooling at the time. So we had a lot of people unfamiliar with public school and with the whole FCAT process. We lost four teachers during the year for various reasons, and by the end of the year, I was grateful, which is unusual for me because I'm so highly competitive academically, to have a C at that point. After that, though, and at that time, Mike McHugh was my mentor, and he came to me before the grades even came out, and he said, "Well, you need to write a recovery plan, just in case." So I did. So we worked off of that, and then next year, we really concentrated on looking at data better, at increasing professional development for our staff. We were able to get the grade up to a B. Then next year, we continued with that. We have teachers who worked during the summer, and they look at curriculum, they look at data so that we can plan for the next year. And then we finally made it last year to an A. And we realized that we still have the gaps with our ESOL students and in science, and those are things that we're addressing now. I think the biggest thing I want to convey is that we have a wide variety of students. We have students that are gifted, that are going into high school with four high school credits already. We have students that are gifted, but they didn't work well in a traditional school. And with us having a small school and really getting to know the parents and the students, we really try to meet the needs of the students. So one of the most gratifying things for me is when a parent comes back to me and says, "My child never wanted to go to school, but now she does." Or, "My child was," because they had learning disabilities, so they were in special classes, they weren't allowed to participate in the arts, and now they are. With our extended day, we can still give them the opportunities to provide, or, excuse me, to participate in the arts and still do the learning support that we need for them. We know we need to be in a school. We're in an A district. We are striving for that. We are trying to target what our weaknesses are, what our students' weaknesses are, so we can close that achievement gap. I think we're doing a good job at closing the opportunity gap so that these kids who may not have had opportunities in a traditional large school have, they have a sense of success when they can get up on stage, or when they can get behind a camera and do video production that they wouldn't have otherwise. And I think that's where we serve the needs of a certain population within Sarasota County, and we're glad to be able to do it. I'm going to just close by saying that going forward, we have a stable teaching staff, we have a stable population, we have a waiting list, and I think that we can continue to show progress in the areas where we're weak and to capitalize on our achievements. I thank you.
Any other comments for other board members or members of your illustrious group? I'm sure Dan Kennedy has.
Well, I'm very impressed with the school. I wouldn't be part of it if I didn't think it was doing a top-notch job. And, you know, I have an opportunity to interact with the students occasionally when I'm on campus, and I see how they interact with other adults. And I think one of the things that the school does so well is it gives these kids a sense of confidence in dealing with older people. And when they interact with adults, for example, I was there when Leadership Sarasota came for a tour, and there was probably 50 or 60 adults, and the kids had no problems coming right up, looking them in the eye, and having, carrying on an intelligent conversation. And I think this is all part of the paradigm of a performing arts environment in which they are learning. And so I think the school overall, as I said many years ago, I think it seems like when we were first starting the school, that there's a lot of horsepower at this school. And I think we're beginning to see it evolve to an even higher degree at this point. I know the board is probably concerned about facilities, and I do want to assure the district board that our board is taking that project on, and we have been diligently looking for ways to improve the facilities. I have a rendering of a potential building with me today. I'll pass it around in a few minutes so you can all see that. Matt and I have been working with various agencies to fund the construction of a new building, and I think that that is going to happen in the near future, and that will take the school to the next highest level.
That's great. You're always a star, so I think it's particularly appropriate that you would have a bow tie on today with the stars on it. You might want to wear that more often, Dan.
And very few people on this board have noticed the stars.
Oh, really? I noticed it immediately, but I think it's great. We might have to get Eric one of those bow ties. At any rate, let's start with Eric. Do you have questions? None at all? Are you sure?
Yep.
Shirley Brown.
Well, I just got a look at this. This wouldn't, you obviously couldn't put it on the.
It will fit on the new lot that we just bought.
You bought a lot where?
Adjacent to where we are now.
I had concerns about a conversion charter. Well, wasn't so much conversion. I mean, you were there before. You were there before, and I was familiar with the school, and I had some concerns. Will they be able to make it? And I was pleased to see you got a C the first year, even better when you got the B, and just thrilled when you got the A.
That's great.
And I'm so glad that you are looking at those things and building it up. Little concerned about your principal leaving.
Us, too.
But I know that you'll be looking for.
Our board has formed a search committee, and they're diligently looking at a number of highly qualified applicants. We hope to have that decision done by, what was it, the 20th or 17th, I think it was? In March, mid-March, we will have that selection taking place.
Yeah, and, you know, when I saw that when we were going to be sharing even more of our capital dollars, that there was no school, I think that even if you had applied to us for something, there was no school, I think, that needed it more than yours.
Thank you.
And this plan that you've got looks great. And I mean, to me, all those little buildings was probably, although I know it worked. I've been there.
It is, it's working.
I did the pat on the backs, and, well, maybe some kids kind of like being at home still.
You're right. Actually, someone really liked the cozy atmosphere.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'm thrilled and, you know, happy to be supportive of you.
Thank you.
I really don't have any questions of you all. I've been following your progress closely, and I often stop in and I speak with Mrs. Ward and Matt, and it's just a welcoming environment. I've never felt uncomfortable just parking my car and walking in. Everybody's been very receptive to me. I've had an opportunity to watch the students at work. They're mostly in there singing and acting over there. I can't help but remark that the out, the drawing that you had for the new school looks very similar to another school.
He likes that.
Yeah. Yeah, that was my first thought when I saw that.
Mike Carlson.
Yeah, but I want to congratulate you. And I also, I'm very impressed that you know where your weaknesses are and what you have to work on. I like the fact that you can come here and say you know you have to work at ESOL. I like that. Rather than trying to shuffle it under the bed or the covers or something like that. So thank you very much. I look forward to working with you for many more years.
I want to say that, you know, you're to be complimented from going from a C to an A. That's not easy, particularly with the demographic of students that you have. I really think that one of my concerns is capacity and how many students you have now and how you'll include more students. Can you address that for me just a moment?
The new building will hold 265, and that will take all of the students off of the existing campus, which will then allow us the opportunity to renovate parts of the existing campus, which will allow us the opportunity to grow the school population.
Okay, that's a great thing to do. We know we're about to have a vote on a referendum. You know, that's the big thing that we have. When we looked at each school and we look and we see the Pine View principal in the back, we know how much money we give to Pine View and each school and what that funds. Tell me a little bit about how much money you get from the referendum and what positions or what those funds go for, please.
So we've been getting, well, first, I'm going to jump on Cecilia's compliment of the Sarasota School Board, and this is not to fluff you guys up before we get ready to have a vote on our renewal, but Cecilia and I go to the charter school conferences every year, and I've gone the last two years down to Fort Lauderdale for the legislative summit that they do. This past year, we were fortunate to have a few of our, of our members of the current Sarasota charter school world, the school board, as well as some past members of the Sarasota County School Board employees, and it was a great representation, and it really shows how fortunate we are to be in Sarasota County. I almost feel guilty sometimes when we're at these charter school conferences and I hear all the horror stories of other schools having to fight for everything that they can, and they're in a constant battle with their districts. And so truly, thank you so much for your support of charter schools in Sarasota County. The referendum, we have gotten between about 100 to 125, depending on our population, of course, the last four years. That money has gone towards lease payments, some renovations to provide more space. As we've grown a little bit, we have, over the past three years, added a couple classroom spaces. We're in the process right now. Again, some of that money went into a reserve account that we were able to then use as a down payment on the piece of property we purchased last November, November of 2016. So we purchased an acre and a quarter right next to us. We're constantly looking at the other three acres that are surrounding that acre and a quarter right next to us that's been sitting vacant for so long, but so far, we haven't, we haven't gotten to that point. Of course, if the referendum passes again and legislative keeps with their capital funding that they give us, that might give us a boost to try to get some more of that property as well. We're not trying to be a 1,000-student school. That kind of goes, obviously, completely against our mission and our philosophy, but we would like to be able to grow to support some more staff, or some more students. We have almost a waiting list in almost every one of our elementary classes currently that we could almost start a second class in each of those grade levels if we had the space. So this year, with the legislative passing of the extra capital money, it's supposed to be over 300,000, but with the referendum, every year, it's been about 100 to 120, depending on our population, which has gone a long way in allowing us to use that money and free up some of the FTE dollars for trying to keep our staff salaries competitive, our benefits competitive, to try to retain the quality staff that have helped us be able to get to an A rating.
The referendum dollars are really used operationally. So are there specific teacher positions or anything? For example, we have, you know, longer day and art and music teachers. Are there some things such as that that are funded in your school district, in your school?
I think the biggest thing is being able to add support staff. We had, because given the population we have, we've been able to use those extra dollars to add a counselor and to add an extra ESC person, so, as well as a halftime art position. So those kind of things are things that we could do that we wouldn't be able to do otherwise, and it's really important for our group of students.
I think that's about it for me. I just would say that you're to be complimented on doing what you've done in a short period of time. You do have a large population of students who are at free and reduced lunch, and you do have a large number for such a small school of diverse population, which is to be complimented as well. I know I have attended several of your events, and they were great, and, as I say, keep inviting us to things, not just at the end of the year when we have Sarasota High School graduating on the same night, but at other times. Because I just was speaking to another charter school chair of a board this week, and I said, gee, you know, he said, "What can I do to get more involved?" I said, "You know, let us know, invite us to things, because we will come, because, you know, we consider you just one of our schools." So we really, really look forward to working with you and to seeing the success that you have exemplified so far, increase and grow, because we really think that you're doing some good things. And the art and music doesn't hurt at all. It really enhances, I think, everything about a child. Dr. Bowden, do you have a couple of questions?
I do. My first question is, what do you know about your students when they leave your campus? You've created quite the environment there, but what happens when they leave you, and what do you know about their success? And do they go on to larger schools, and do they re-acclimate to larger campuses?
They do. I can use last year particularly. We have quite a number of students who want to, and were accepted over the last two years into Sarasota Polytechnic. We have quite a number that go to Booker into the VPA, which you would expect. And the one thing about both of those schools is they know they have to get those scores that are acceptable on the FSA, and that's an incentive for them because they know they want to go into animation, or they want to go into theater or something, but they also know that they have to keep their academics off. So those are good things. We have six or seven now at Sarasota High in the ACE program. We have some that have already been accepted into ACE for next year. We have some at IB at Riverview. So it's really, they're going to the four major high schools, and the ones, our first group is graduating this year from high school, and they seem to be doing well, so, especially the ones that have gone into the specialty programs, so.
My other question to you is just specific to the term of the renewal. Maybe you could speak to what a 15-year renewal might do for your operations and your ability to grow and finance buildings. There really is no criteria. It talks about a renewal, a maximum of 15 years, but could you talk about what a 15-year renewal might do for you compared to a five, 10, or 12-year renewal as far as your planning and development?
I'll be glad to address that. I was going to bring that up before we closed anyway, because, as you know, we're working on building a new building, and we're going to have to negotiate financing for that, and it's very difficult. I know this from my own personal experience with SMA. If you don't have a 15-year charter, it's almost impossible to negotiate financing. So it's critical for, I think, the growth and health and well-being of the school in the future to have a 15-year.
Do you want to jump in there?
No, you go ahead and finish, Nolan.
Yep. My last question is just, how are you influencing other charter schools in our area? I've had a chance to interact with you at state conferences, but can you talk about how our charter schools work together and support each other?
I think being part of particularly the principals group of charter schools is, it was a support group for me coming into this, coming out of private school, so much there, and also we're able to bounce ideas off of each other. Not being part of a management company, you're sort of out there on your own. So it's so important that you have those other people to talk to. Steve Crump from Suncoast acted as a mentor to me, you know, and that was so helpful as I was coming on there. I think the exchange of ideas is the big thing that we do, and we do compare notes, you know, and who's got the most, or we sort of trade students sometimes, you know. But the nice thing is, if somebody doesn't have room in a school, they will say, "Go to this one. They're going to be able to meet your needs, you know, or that's a good fit for you." And we're open with each other with that.
Ms. Brown.
I want to expand on that referendum issue. I know there's some people out in the community that don't quite understand charter schools, and they'll say, "Well, why are you giving our money to private schools?" You are not a private school. You are a local board, and it's, you have to take all the tests, and you have to follow the curriculum. So you are a public school in Sarasota County, and the test scores that you get are counted towards the scores that we get. So it's important for us to support, well, we feel it is, I don't know, other districts don't, but we feel it's important to support our charter schools, and we even supported our charter schools with some capital dollars. There was a lot of discussion about, you know, '70, '69 last year and how the state was making us share our dollars, and I think that came from the state telling us what to do, not us being able to make that decision on how much we can based on the dollars that we have. And also, it didn't fit right for all of the districts around the state. That's where some of that came in. But the referendum dollars, we've always been happy to share with our charter schools because we know that they are part of our district, and I think we're saying, "We want you to set up, when the new schools come in, we want them to set up with a budget without counting that, because you never know." But right now, we feel that you're definitely a part of our public schools in Sarasota County, and we gladly share, because we want you to succeed, because if you succeed, that helps us succeed. You're part of our score, too.
Any other questions or statements or comments? Well, I just want to say that, and you may have some closing comments, Mr. Kennedy, I'm sure.
Well, from my perspective, I'd like the board to know that I have thoroughly enjoyed my time as chairman of the board for the Sarasota Academy of the Arts. It's, you know, this is, I've put in 46 years in education, and I'm still at it one way or the other, and I'm still learning new things. But the paradigm that we have at SAA is one that is definitely working. The kids are happy, the faculty is happy. We have a direction, we have a unified board, we have good leadership, and I see good things for the school in the future with the help of the district.
Well, thank you for being here today and showing support, and you certainly have a number of people in the audience and from your board and from your administration, and that speaks volumes to us. You are important to us. We hope that you'll get the vote out for the referendum, and we look forward to seeing you later in the spring. Thank you. Next on our schedule is the achievement gap update, and we have Dr. Dawn Clayton and her team. Please come forward.
As they assemble, good morning, members of the board, Superintendent Bowden. For the next item on the agenda, providing an achievement gap update, we have Dr. Dawn Clayton and representative members of her committee teams. As you all know, Dr. Clayton has over 23 years of experience as an educator and 15 years of site-based leadership right here in Sarasota County. Dawn has been collaborating with teachers, school, and district administrators on over 20, yes, I want to say 20 committees. We are sharing and spreading the wealth because there is so much important work to be done. be done, working on creating pathways, opportunities, and solutions that focus the district's attention, talents, and resources on closing the achievement gap. So this morning, we have Dawn, and a few representative committee members are here to share an update with you. Thank you very much.
Good morning, everybody. So thank you, Mr. Renoff, for that introduction. I just have to say, on a personal note, it's been an absolute pleasure to be able to work with the talented leadership and staff throughout our district on this issue. What do we do to close the achievement gap in Sarasota County? It's been a pleasure to collaborate with this board as well, because I know that this issue is not just near and dear to me and to our staff, but to you as well. So we'll get right to kind of what today's going to be about. So our expertise, our resources, our talents, our expertise, as Mr. Renoff said, is all being summarized and utilized to be able to close the achievement gap. The 20 gap committees or subcommittees are actively creating pathways for increased achievement for our most fragile learners, for our learners that we all care about. Our, our gap committees are operating from the premise of local, state, and national research-based best practices. We are empowered by our chief academic officer, Dr. Kingsley, and of course, Dr. Bowden, and our gap committees have absolutely taken on the charge of collaborating to make a positive change. So today, what's happening today, we have four committees that will report to you the progress of what their committees are working on. Many hours have been dedicated by our teachers, our specialists, our school, and our district leaders to impact the change. Today, the chairs of the committees will present their committee focus. They'll also present their stated goals and the progress to date, keeping in mind that this is continued work throughout the end of the school year and even into our future beyond that. Today, our first committee was, is Project 10. That was the first update that you will receive, will receive today. As the committee's chair, I will present a unique opportunity to reach even more of our students, to be able to walk across that stage and to obtain their graduation diploma. The second committee to present today is the attendance committee, that's represented by our co-chairs, Deb Jackalone of the Student Services Department, as well as Kristi Jarvis of Red Ashen Elementary School. Followed by them, we'll have Stephen Covert of Pineview School and Brandon Johnson of Northport. They are co-chairs of the Minority Representation and Advancement Committee. And then the final committee that will present today is the Educators Rising Committee, that is led by Catherine Cucosa of the Curriculum Department, and BJ Ivy, many of, of course, all of you know, our Riverview Teacher of the Year in 2016. So, being respectful of time, our, our school board presentations today will be a total of 15 minutes for each committee. They have a brief presentation in the beginning, and we do ask that you, we allow them to present their presentation for about seven to eight minutes. And then at the end of that timeframe, we'll have it open to questions related to that committee before we move on to the next one. A reminder to our committee presenters, I'll give you a little three-minute wrap-up, just to make sure that we are staying on time, which is something that I know is near and dear to, to Dr. Bowden and our vice chair today, Mrs. Goodwin. So today, I invite the, well, I invite myself up. I'm the first committee. I happen to be chair of this committee. You've heard from Project 10 in the past, and you should have in front of you a document that is colorful. Mine is not, but it says, "The Office of Dropout Prevention, the Continuum of Services for High School Graduation Proposal." So I'm so excited to be able to present this research to you. This is one of the first tasks that my department, the Office of Dropout Prevention, took on when we began in this role, which was to explore graduation options for children in our district who have already dropped out of school. There are a host of services to be able to bring kids back into school, and I just wanted to share with you this idea of an acceleration academy. And also, first of all, where it fits into our continuum of services. So the chart that you have in front of you, the blue bar at the top represents our high school pathways for graduation. Even in the presentation prior to this, you heard about some of the pathways that are in there in terms of the dual enrollment opportunities or the specialty programs in our high schools. They're an amazing mosaic of programs in Sarasota County, which you have supported over the years, and our children have flourished in. We have 26, 24, 18-credit option diplomas, and we also have all of our comprehensive high schools and specialty high schools, Project 10 monitoring within every single district high school, which is the goal of getting every student across the stage at the end of their four years. We also have dropout prevention and monitoring that's beginning, that's begun in the sixth grade, to really help our middle schoolers to really reach that goal, too, of getting to high school with, with stellar backgrounds. So beyond that, the next tier of intervention that we have, which is the orange bar right below that, are dropout prevention programs, when we see that children are struggling. So the first level of support in all of our high schools are our Apex Curriculum Programs. And our Apex is a program that our teachers utilize. We have teachers even today who are presenting, who are teachers within that program, which provides a different setting, a different opportunity for kids to be able to complete the coursework that they need for graduation. We also have two programs in our district which you're aware of. We have Triad as a restorative second chance opportunity for children that are struggling. And then also, SEESIS, which are services provided in the North County at Northport High School, and also in the South County, excuse me, in the South County at Northport High School, and the North County at Riverview High School, for our teen parents. So where does Acceleration Academies fit in? And that would be the bottom portion of the triangle, the yellow portion. It's considered a drop-back-in academy. So despite all of these amazing efforts that we have throughout our county, we still have children who drop out of school. We still have children who feel that graduation with a high school diploma in four years is something that is just beyond their ability to reach. Acceleration Academies is a company that comes in, or LLC that comes in, and it provides a service to these children. They go and they canvass our community, they find children who have decided to make that decision to drop out of school, and they offer them an alternative environment that is full of nurturing, and full of curriculum resources, and full of pathways for graduation. We had the opportunity in my department to go visit St. Lucie County, which has had Acceleration Academies now for about a year and a half, almost two years now, and to actually see this in action and talk to children in that county, and understand that they, their lives were changed by the ability, because they were, thought, they thought, they wrote, they wrote this off for themselves. And when somebody knocked on their door and invited them back in, and they took that call to come back in and earn that diploma, they were really excited about their, their futures and be, and being able to earn those, those graduation diplomas. So Acceleration Academy, they, they will come in. You'll see a more in-depth presentation at the afternoon workshop today. I'll be there as well. We have a representative from Acceleration Academies in the audience today, in case you have any particular questions beyond what, what is in the contract and what we discussed right now. But this is an opportunity for our children who have dropped out of school to come back into school and to be able to graduate with the high school diploma. And this will cost our district nothing, because Acceleration Academies collects the FTE for the students that they enroll. Okay? So at this point, if you have any particular questions about Acceleration Academy?
Well, this time I'm going to start to my left with Caroline Zucker.
No, I think it's one of the greatest ideas yet. I've met with the people from Accelerated Academies, and we've had many discussions with them. And I'm so excited, because this, I think, could be something that we've been missing.
Yeah.
Because there are kids that drop out, and then all of a sudden, two years down the road, they realize, what in the world did I do? And there's no way for us to be able to capture them, but this academy will be fantastic.
Absolutely.
So I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Shirley Brown?
And maybe we'll save this for this afternoon, but, you know, there was some flack about another program where the students were still in school and districts were paying them to graduate them so that they wouldn't count as a dropout.
Correct.
These kids are already listed as a dropout in our system.
Correct.
And then they come back.
Correct, yes. And the difference between those two programs is that the other program was a private high school. Acceleration Academies will actually be welcomed into our district. We have to apply for an MSID, because they will be considered a cost center within our district. They will not enroll in the typical way that our students enroll at Sarasota High School or any other schools, but it will be something that they will be referred to because of the fact that they've dropped out or have a high degree of risk for dropping out. So that's the difference between these two programs.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Robinson?
I think this is a noble goal, and I, and from the looks of it, it looks like Accelerated Academy is something I would welcome, but before we go into another program, I want to know what, what, this is very short on data, which I love data. I want to know, what's a dropout rate now? What is it we're doing? If we start this new program, what are the goals? How do we, how are we going to measure success? How are we going to know this accelerated program actually works? Sounds good, but at the end of the day, does it work? Does it meet your goals? And I, I want to know that before, you know, I can really sign off, if, if that's part of the process, to sign off on this. I want to know what, where are we at now? And what's your goal? Where do you want to be? And how is this going to get you there? And when are you going to, what intermediary times are you going to do self-reflection to say, am I, you know, on the path to success? I, I think that this is a great start, but this is simply a great start. This is not anything that I can honestly say that, you know, let's, 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 let's sign on and take it to the next level. This is, this is, to me, like, this is a great concept plan. Why don't we flesh this out and, and go further? But before you do that, it doesn't even tell me where we're at now, today, which I think that we should know that. Maybe you don't have the goals of where you want to be, but I definitely, when you present this presentation, it should say where you're at now. So thank you.
Dr. Bowden?
Well-received comments, and then this afternoon, we'll talk more specifically about that.
And I think it's important that we judge the acceleration initiative on a clear standard, that it is not a dropout prevention program. These students have already dropped back, so they've dropped out. And so it is a matter of returning them to the system. And so the way that you judge them is, is rather simplistic, which is by a simple head count, because you're not impacting graduation rates and dropout rates, because they're on the backside of it. The risk to the district, it is a zero-sum gain proposition, is that by returning these students to the system, this is FTE that we were not capturing previous to us entering into the agreement. So these are not resources that we've redirected from any other program. And so our contract with them is simply that when they return FTE to the system, that they use that FTE to operate their program, and that these students graduate. And so we will give annual reports. We'll talk about the amount of money that, that flows to them. We'll talk about the number of students that graduate. But it's, there's always a caution, when you talk about programs of this type, that you don't talk in percentages, because every single one of these students that graduates is a win, because they've already dropped out. It's not something that is part of our plan to keep them from dropping out. As a matter of fact, we would not make referrals to the Acceleration Academy. We're going to do everything within our power to make sure they graduate in a traditional way. But this is an additional safety net for these students.
Eric?
No, she was crystal clear it wasn't going to cost money. I, I understand, and I agree. One, bringing down one kid is, is worth it. But the question is, is what's the opportunity cost? Maybe there was another program that didn't, also didn't cost us money, that could have got two kids instead of one. So I, I think that we need to look at, again, where are we at? What's our goal? And, you know, I, I want to know those numbers. If you don't know where you're going, how do you know when you get there?
And I also want to point out, there is nothing exclusive about this contract, that if there are other programs that think they can do a better job, they're welcome to step forward and enter into similar agreements.
Well, to me, that's the attractiveness of, this is a, a model that was brought to
us, and they said, we'd like to try here in Sarasota. The risk to us was minimal, and so we said, we're willing to try this strategy, because we think it's good for kids. If it's not good for kids, we'll move in another direction. But if another entity steps forward and says, I think we can do it better, we would enter into a similar agreement and let them go and compete.
Jane. Caroline?
I have to think that this is a win-win for us, because these people came to us, offered us a program at no cost to us, and they are going to go out into the community and bring back these students that are already lost to our system. And it's not something that we could do on our own, because we cannot bring them back into school. So this is a win-win. It doesn't matter to me what they're doing, as long as they're bringing kids back into the school system and getting them through either GED or graduating from high school. Just the mere fact that somebody came to us and offered this at no cost to us, I mean, you can't lose.
Dr. Clayton?
Just one, I guess, final comment to kind of wrap that up. I, I appreciate your comments, Mrs. Zucker. And the other thing I will say is that prior to being in this position, in this new role that I play at the district office, our People Support Office, as well as our Office of High School with Mr. Kentis, they've looked at other organizations that do these drop-back-in academies. And I think what the clear standout with this model is that it is a model that has been done in other counties and other places, and they seem to have systems in place to be able to capture the children who have already dropped out, which is why this is being presented today.
I just want to add a couple of things. One is Apex Curriculum Program. I hear Apex thrown around a lot by a lot of people. I know we're using it in the summer, and kids go into rooms and sit with teachers for summer school, and that's what they're doing is Apex. I'd like, I'd like some more documentation on how many Apex programs are we running, and what is that costing us? And when do we use it? I would also like to know about Triad. How many students do we have in Triad currently? I know we start out with a smaller number at the beginning of the year, and then that ramps up, but we have all these new strategies for keeping kids in school, so I'd like to know more about what we're doing with Triad now. And I'd also like to know about SEESIS. How many mothers and fathers do we have in the SEESIS program? And, and how successful are these people with graduating on time? So I, I would like, I would like more documentation on those areas. Okay?
Okay, very good.
Now we move on.
All right. Thank you, thank you. So at this point, I'm very excited to bring up our first committee that has worked very hard on attendance matters throughout our district. So I'd like to welcome Deb Jackalone from Student Support Services, as well as Kristi Jarvis from Ashen Elementary School. And we have Kent Miller, as well as Lindsay Gower.
Coming on that side. Okay, good morning. Am I on? Nope? Try again.
The red button.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you guys? Thank you all for allowing the attendance committee to be here to share some of our updates with you all this morning. I'm Debbie Jackalone. I've had the pleasure of working hand-in-hand with Kristi Jarvis, co-chairing this attendance committee. I'm really proud to say that this attendance committee is very unique. As you heard earlier this morning, Dawn Clayton referenced that there are 20 closing the achievement gap subcommittees, and our attendance committee is the largest of the subcommittees. We have 12 members, and our members are representative of all of our divisions, our elementary division, our middle division, our high school division, as well as our People Support Services team, our instructional technology team, research, data, and assessment, and a community partner, the Patterson Foundation. Our, our committee has really been focused on three main things this past year. We have been working on, and we will continue to work on, building positive relationships with our students and our families and our communities. We will continue to try to, to equip our schools with the best tools and resources necessary so they can monitor the data to help close the achievement gap of our most, our students most in need. And we really, really want to focus on positive interventions and strategies as we move forward. At this time, Kent Miller is going to share a little bit about our journey, where we've been and where we're going.
Good morning, everyone. I'm going to give you a brief history of the attendance timeline report that you see in front of you. So two years ago, the Subcommittee on Attendance at the elementary level turned our attention towards data analysis to try to improve attendance. What we found, the problem that was taking place was, it was very difficult to gather the information, because we were having to pull it from multiple systems and multiple reports. So our solution was that we partnered with two departments, the IT department and the RAY office, to build from the ground up a tool that would allow administrators to track attendance at their schools, at the same time provide all the necessary information in one report. So you can see on the report that you have there, we have excused or unexcused absences with the dates for each, numbers of tardies, including the dates as well, the amount of lost instructional time, the early dismissals, the parent contact information, all housed in one report, whereas in the past, we were pulling it from multiple places. So the elementary Subcommittee piloted the tool at the end of the last school year, and then we brought this attendance timeline report tool and its other functions to the district attendance committee that Deb spoke of. And then this year, we tweaked the report And then, this year, we tweaked the report, we helped with the help again from the IT department and the RAY Office, and we made the report applicable to not only elementary, but middle school and high school as well. So, the result of the teamwork is a tool that will help our administrators at all levels, K-12, to better, to, excuse me, to better gather attendance information, which makes us more efficient in the analysis of attendance data, which in turn allows us to spend more time on those key interventions that are making the impact on improving attendance. So, you now have a bit of a history of why this report was created through our teamwork, but there's, there's more that was developed beyond just the attendance timeline report that you see. There's a second function of this tool, which is having the capability to merge the information seamlessly into what we're calling a nudge letter. And Kristi Jarvis will share that information with you about the letter. Kristi?
Good morning. In addition to our timeline report, we began to have some discussions centered around a common vision and a message being sent to families. We were finding that schools were sending all different letters, and each of those letters shared a different message regarding attendance. After we met with Beth Duda from the Patterson Foundation, she shared Harvard's research about parent efficacy. In the study, Harvard found the following characteristics important to include in a letter to reduce absenteeism. So, the nudge letter that you'll be looking at right now, and this is hot off the press, we have added a few components to it, so you can see that. It should include a social comparison, show that we are on the same team, correct mistaken beliefs about excused versus unexcused absences, be less than 50 words for low literacy individuals, show gratitude that we are on the same team, have a color comparison to peers, that's that little graph, and include a public website for more information, which you can find at the very bottom. So, once again, we asked our amazing IT team if they could make this dream a reality, and once again, they came through. We are still finalizing our components, but the letter you have before you is what we're hoping to share with our families. As we continued to look at data to determine what was working, we started to notice trends in schools having success. Those schools had invested in relationships and made connections with our families. Through their connections, they used the community foundation emergency funds to help with funding transportation. They also realigned roles at their schools to better support students. At Venice High, they began a program called VHS Connects. Lindsay Galiff is going to share the impact this program is having on Venice High School student attendance.
Okay. I think we have pictures. Turn this on. Okay. So, one of the things, sitting at the table of 12 people, a few representatives from high school, a lot of this information, reports spoke to elementary schools, where students are in one classroom for a majority of the day. And so, one of the things at the high school that Mr. Jackson has brought to us is VHS Connects. We started it in November. So, if you look at the data that's on the dashboard, where the line is, that's the beginning of November. So, you can see the steady increase of attendance compared to last year. And one of the things, next slide. Ooh, we missed one. Is there a missing slide?
The pictures.
It's okay. It's like four pictures. You got them? Okay. So, the four pictures there, it's just a picture of what any given Monday looks like on our campus at nine o'clock. The teachers on our campus, there's a snapshot there. The top left is one of our administrators playing guitar with a group of students. And so, it is every week the students look forward to it. The students, their voice was heard, teachers are offering things that interest them. And so, that was our way to connect with the students. The next picture that you see is a picture of a social media clip. You know, this is how we connected with students, but we felt that we needed to connect with teachers as well and build those relationships and make them feel wanted to keep coming back and doing this for the students and our school as a whole. And so, one of the things that's posted, part of our PBIS plan, our IMPACT plan that we call it, is acknowledging teachers and recognition. And so, every time we have interaction with an administrator or guidance counselor, we have the students fill out an IMPACT card and kind of just recognize a teacher or a staff member on our campus that has done something out of the ordinary that they, they feel that has impacted them. So, here's an example that a teacher on a Friday, where a teacher had a rough day, Kate went to her mailbox and saw a note from a student, just a kind of random act of kindness that was in there. So, that's one of the things that we are doing to build relationships and capacity at our school.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to start the questions this time. I just recently met with the Vice Chancellor of Education, the Department of Education in Tallahassee, and his question was, you know, what is chronic absenteeism for our district and another district, or perhaps different? What do we, you know, 28 days is really a long time out for getting this letter out. What is the first trigger? What is the amount? Is it 10%?
It is.
It is 10%?
It is. In most schools, we are sort of setting that up, but most of our schools are sending a letter out at five, minimally 10 days. So, this is just an example of one that we pulled, wanted to show a large discrepancy in that, but yes.
Exactly, exactly. And we'd be in really serious trouble with 28 days, right? Because you can't graduate if you have missed so many classes in high school.
Right.
How many is that?
I don't know in high school.
Well, we need to know that. And we need to tell these students that when they come for orientation. We need to tell their parents that, because it's important. I remember I got a letter, and my daughter was about to, shall we say, had missed a few English classes, because she was going to sit at the beach first thing in the morning, because she thought she knew everything, and then going on to school a little later. So, I didn't know anything about that. But at any rate, those things are kind of important. But we know that, you know, chronic absenteeism is a big thing, and not graduating from high school, and chronic teacher absences is another big thing. And, you know, staying on task is all important. But I think this is probably some of the most important work that we can do, because attendance counts, and it counts. I mean, I know Eric Robinson is going to be at his desk at, what, 4:30 in the morning, six or seven days a week, but, you know, that's really important. Dress to play and showing up and being there is really important, as one grows and, you know, creates that, that will to do and to be present. So, I think this is really important work. Mrs. Zucker, do you have a question? Shirley Brown?
I have a concern about this letter. I take a look at it, and it looks to me like you're bashing a parent. I'm a parent, and I'm looking at this, and I got all this red, and there's all this green. I really think that there should have been something before that last sentence, "We appreciate your help," saying that, "We're here to help. We want to help you with this." And, and that you can go to this site for, for information, or call me, whoever is sending this out. To me, this, this sounds like it's another bash on the parent, and maybe there's a parent who's been fighting with their child to get them to school. Maybe there's a parent who has a sick child that hasn't been in school. Maybe there's a parent who's frustrated because they don't, their child isn't districted to their neighborhood school, and they can't always get them there, and we've kicked them off the bus. So, I would think that this should be more like, "We want to help you," rather than, "I want to bash you," because this sounds like, to me, if I was, if I got, if I was a parent and I got this, I wouldn't look at it as, "You want to help me? We want to be a team on this," because this doesn't sound that way to me.
Mr. Robinson?
I'll talk some completely different. I do want to point out that I'm very thankful that we have different departments working together to solve a problem. Not all large organizations, is that a commonplace? And so, to get IT, you know, and the research group to work together on this problem is a great thing, testament to our new superintendent for making that happen. I'm sure it happened before, but I think it's happening more often and more collaborative now, so thank you. I also want to thank Lindsay. I probably know her more than anybody else, and I know she loves OBs. I think Venice's Connect is a great thing. I personally support that, so I know it's a great thing. But I'm just going to go back to, I'm sure you can guess what I'm going to say, is, is what is your goal? You know, we, we have now, the past couple of years, at least the last 18 months, have done a better job of tracking attendance, finding out how we're doing. But then, the next question is, now we know how we're doing, well, how do you, how do you want us to be? What do you want us to be? What is the goal of your committee? What does success look like for you? We know now what the issues are, we know what the problems are, we know where the kids are, we know the indicators. You guys are doing a great job of that. Now, I'm going to lump on something more, because I know you guys can do a great job. And so, you know, I want to know is, what, what is your goal? What is your, you know, short? Obviously, it's, it's never good enough. I mean, it's one of those things that's constantly changing, but like, one year, two years, you know, what do you expect this to happen? I would expect, because we're getting, you know, this data, we're communicating with the parents, we're sending these nudge letters, that it's going to have some sort of impact. Or what's the point? And so, the question is, what impact do you want to have? And what impact are you actually having? And at what point, what's the timeline for that impact? That's what I would like to see, but I'm sure that nobody's surprised that I asked that, so.
I don't expect an answer right now, but at some point, Dr. Bowden, I would like to know, you know, where do you see yourself? Where do you see the district going for attendance?
Each of our individual school sites has an attendance goal as part of their school improvement plan. I don't know that we've ever synthesized and stated a goal for the district, but certainly something that, that we should strive for.
You know, can I just get my two cents in? You know what would be great is, is that at one point, 10, 10 days is no longer the chronic absenteeism, that it goes down to nine and eight. And so, so people are, because people are getting less in absenteeism, because we have a saying in my office, "Must be present to win." And so, if you're not present, you don't win. And so, what I'd like to, from, this is Eric Robinson's goal, is being able to lower what a chronic absenteeism, because people have less absenteeism. But going with that, that would imply that the overall absenteeism is going down. What that number is, how it goes down, that's for people who have doctors in front of their names, not for people who have CPA after their name. So, that's my suggestion. But what do I know?
The definition of chronically absent is not our definition. It's a national definition. And so, the metric that you want to affect is the number of students who are chronically absent. And if you ever were to solve that problem, then yeah, you would then start to drive down. Okay, now we don't have students who are absent 10% of the time. Let's see how many are absent, 7% or 8% of the time. But that is a national standard, and allows us to compare ourselves to, to other districts. All right, so I have a question for you. When your group initially formed around the idea of attendance, I think there's an issue related to attendance that none of us contemplated, but I'm becoming increasingly frustrated, particularly at the high school level and the area of attendance, particularly after we receive a social media threat to that school site. Our tact has been, in our district, that when we receive information, that we want to share that information with our parents, so that they can make informed decisions. There are times, as a matter of fact, at Venice High School, where we have sent out messages to parents that says, "We've received a threat, we've identified the threat, we've evaluated the threat, it's safe to come to school." And the following day, we get 50% of the kids at school. We have tremendous law enforcement partners. They are dragging kids out of bed at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning, so that we know when we start school that the threat has been identified and contained. But it has to be affecting our attendance numbers. We're repeatedly receiving these threats, and you can almost be assured that the next day, regardless of what our communication is, that we have 50% of our kids in our high schools the day after receiving these threats. Is that something that's on the radar screen of your committee? Are there national models? How do we continue to communicate with our parents, so that they have the information that we have, but not guarantee ourselves that every time we do a connect ed, that the kids don't come to school?
I don't know that we have the answer for that. I think that we're just starting to look at trends. Alex Pynchon has been wonderful. He's in the IT department. He has brought up all of the data, our portal, and he, we will look at it and start to say, "Why is there a spike here?" And then, we're finding interesting things, like Take Your Child to Work Day. There's a big spike where we have students out there. So, just identifying those pieces. They've now added some new components, where as you scroll over, you can see the date and time. You know, you can actually look at that. Before, you would just have to try to figure out, what was that? We're pulling it apart, trying to get to it. So, we are, as more specific components are being added, we're able to start to look a little further at trends.
But although this chronic absenteeism has been defined nationally, it has not been defined in this state, according to the Department of Education. So, with working with every district, they are finding it very difficult to make that assumption. So, that's what we were talking to them about, and they asked that question, and I thought it was 10%, but I couldn't say I know. So, I think we need to state those things perhaps more to parents. We need to talk to parents upfront. We don't want them to be surprised if they get a letter. We need to tell them what is acceptable and what isn't. I think Hurricane Irma, we saw a bump in attendance or absenteeism after the hurricane or during the, the planning of the hurricane. We also know that these threats are going to affect, and then around, around the holidays, you know, somebody takes the whole week of Thanksgiving off. So, we have to really look at those issues and, and come up with a plan, but, but, you know, what is acceptable is something that we need to really address and talk to parents about.
You can literally, with our new attendance dashboard, look at individual schools and tell the story of that school, of knowing, wait, that was the Friday before a three-day weekend, that was after Hurricane Irma, that was the day after we communicated that there was a threat to the campus. Literally, you can look at the timeline and see the attendance react, and you can tell the story of that school throughout the year. And so, one of the things we knew when we employed these dashboards is it would cause us to ask more questions, which is, all right, so we know that attendance is spiking at different times. Now, the next question is, how do we keep it from happening?
Right. If I could just close by just making one more reference to what you mentioned about the day after a threat. One of our other initiatives through the gap work, but through Dr. Kingsley's work, is a social media campaign. You know, when we think about some of the threats that have come across on social media, we have to empower our children and our parents and our community to understand what appropriate social media usage is. And also, to be able to talk about another committee that we're on, and some of the people on this committee are here, is our mental health committee as well. We think about the challenges and some of the things that are stated on social media, and how that relates to mental health and wellness in Sarasota County. It's something that our committees are addressing in a variety of ways, which will have an impact, not just on the child with the media usage or with the mental health, but also on attendance. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I had one follow-up question. You said something about a spike on Take Your Child to Work Day. Was that a spike of attendance or a spike of non-attendance?
Non-attendance.
Non-attendance on Take Your Child to Work Day.
Because they took their children with them.
Oh, because the kid, the kids went to work. Okay.
It's an excused absence, right. So, so thank you, thank you so much. Thank you so much to this team. The next team that we'll call up is our Minority Representation and Advanced Work Program. So, we're calling up Stephen Colvert and Brandon Johnson.
Good morning.
I know.
That's okay. Is this one, this is on?
Good morning.
No, that is wonderful. Good morning, Ms. Goodwin and board members. Dr. Bowden, thank you, Dr. Clayton, for allowing Mr. Johnson and I to spend a few minutes with you this morning and talk about the incredible work and opportunity we had that began this past summer at the Harvard Closing the Achievement Gap Institute. The conversations that we had at that institute, I believe, were life-changing for us as educators, being able to collaborate. But also, there were community foundation members there, and we were able to have rich discussions about what could we do about underrepresented student populations and underrepresented students in Sarasota County from a comprehensive perspective. So, what we'll share with you this morning, we'll begin with kudos to you all as a board, Dr. Bowden and Dr. Kingsley, for supporting the work of the Subcommittee, but also allowing us to build on the work that had been done last year with underrepresented minority student populations and accelerated work in this area. So, if we could go to the second slide, thank you. This, this committee really was able to, to take the Closing the Achievement Gap mission from Harvard and tailor it to much more of a Closing the Opportunity Gap, rephrasing what we're looking at to specifically focus a mission for us. Of course, we want students to exceed K-12, obviously. In order for them to do that, we need to make sure that we're exposing students to the most rigorous and challenging coursework possible. So, how do we go about ensuring that underrepresented student populations, minority students, that's African-American, Asian, Hispanic, Native American, multi-ethnic groups, that they all have the opportunity to take the most challenging and rigorous coursework available? Our mission was to ensure that every student has an equal opportunity to be challenged at that most rigorous and appropriate level. Next slide, please. So, in order to do that, we looked at the research. How does the research... How does the research inform what our group was able to do? And again, building on the previous work of the committee, it really grew into a guiding question for us, and that is, how do we, how do we identify students of high ability and high potential throughout the district? And the research from many, Donna Ford among them, chiefly among them, she says, "Low-income and minority students are substantially underrepresented in gifted and talented and accelerated work programs throughout the United States." There's also evidence that the traditional referral-based system for identifying students tends to overlook eligible students from disadvantaged families. This raises the question of whether a comprehensive screening program might be able to identify significant numbers of poor and minority students who qualify for gifted programs but go undetected in a referral-based program. So what can we do?
Jump in real quick, just so you guys are aware. Excuse me. So I know. Just so you're aware, remember, we're going to update you on a continuous basis. So within the high school and middle school information that we have, I'll answer some of your questions. But I do want you to understand, this first piece, we're kind of starting from the elementary level. So when we met as a committee, you'll kind of understand why Dr. Culvert's talking so much, is that we started from that level and we're working our way up. So just so he has the opportunity to kind of explain, and then we'll go from there.
So universal screening is what the research, and I provided a list of the researchers, the preeminent researchers in this area, all signifying that universal screening is the most significant tool in making sure that we identify students. And one of the most important reasons is that nationally, minority children and students from poverty are less likely to be recommended because they have less exposure to rich vocabulary, experiences, and trends under representing screening opportunities. So I will, I've been given the hurry up. We want to remove the reliance on referral systems from parents, teachers, or anyone else. We want to remove bias for limited language student proficiency or lack of exposure in environments rich in language. And we want to level the playing field for all students in Sarasota County. So PineView, next slide. PineView volunteered to support this universal screening opportunity with our Pupil Support Services Department to universally screen all students in second grade at our Title I schools. And as you can see from the next slide, the total students in second grade in Sarasota County Title I schools was 1,127 students. Here's the list of schools. And kudos to our Pupil Support Services Department and our incredible school psychologists to be able to do this screening. This was using the Naglieri Nonverbal Ability Test, which is, according to the research, the test that needs to be used as a screening tool. Cut score was established, and 249 students out of that 1,127 were identified.
Eric.
Just real quick, you said cut scores were established, and I know that, and we've talked about this, that Department of Education, were the cut scores the same regardless of whether they were underrepresented group or not?
Excellent question.
Those are the only questions I ask.
I will get to that. The Naglieri is a screening tool. So the cut score for that was 115, and that was established by Sarasota County school psychologists. The 1,127, again, that was the total number of Title I second graders. 249 students met that 115 cut score. That number is now being, by our school psychologist, put through the full gifted evaluation process, which includes a gifted IQ score, achievement, the full range.
Did I answer it, Eric? No, you did not.
No. The, that score is set by the state of Florida. And there is a Plan A, which is 130 full-scale IQ, and a Plan B, which is 120 full-scale IQ. And as you'll see in a second, the final number that we're hoping to get won't be, we won't be able to update you until April 27th, because that's the date by which all screenings will be completed. But the state of Florida sets the IQ score for the students in the state. And there is a Plan A and a Plan B.
So for the first piece, it was the same score. As they go through the process, there is a Plan A and a Plan B. So those students who were identified did use the same cut score.
And as you can see on the previous slide, it's a pie chart. It shows you the breakdown of those 249 students. 45.7% were male, 54.2% were female. 34% of the students who met that initial cut score were Hispanic, 85 students. 48.1% were white, or 120. 5.6% were African-American, 3.2 were Asian, and 8.8% or 22 students were identified as multi-ethnic. So as you go to the next two slides, what are the next steps? Students need to, with their parents, give permission for full evaluation for gifted service. The complete IQ and achievement tests would be completed. That date is April 27th. That's when we'll, we'll know how many of those 249 will have been evaluated and met either Plan A or Plan B. Those who do have the option to either receive services at their districted school, choose to attend a gifted cluster site, or attend a gifted magnet program such as PineView. And we'll need to obviously continue to build awareness and capacity throughout our community and district, awareness of what those options are for families, continue to provide support and training to teachers and administrators, instructional leaders. And then for the students, one of the incredible benefits the research suggests is that this identifies whether they are fully eligible for gifted services or not. This truly identifies for us high ability, high potential learners who may not have otherwise been identified. And so considering programs such as Rising Scholars that other districts have implemented, how might we tailor those to meet our students in Sarasota County?
And if I could just add to this wonderful presentation, the goal of this committee is obviously twofold. It's one, to increase student representation in our gifted programs, but also to build advanced work programs at all of our district schools. And many of our schools have them, but how do we find opportunities for our children who are showing signs of so much great academic potential through this Naglieri or through other resources to be able to be in these advanced work programs? And I love that this committee has taken on the challenge of starting at the elementary level and building up. So with the goal of, down the line, we'll have even more students represented in the high schools, for instance, in some of our ACE or IB programs, those other specialty programs as well. So huge kudos to this team.
Eric, we start with you.
Thank you. I would expect that next year, that the percentage of free and reduced lunch and our gifted clusters will increase. That's what I'd want to see. I expect that PineView will not be 0.6% black going forward. I would expect these things, if we are able to identify more kids needing accelerated coursework, that that would imply that more kids would have the opportunity to have more accelerated coursework. If that doesn't happen, you know, we need to come back and talk about why that did not happen. Do I think everyone's going to go to PineView? No. Do I think, you know, there may be parents who, for whatever reason, say, "I don't want my kids to get gifted services." I understand that. But as a whole, I would think that the free and reduced, because you're going to introduce more Title I kids in, I would think that the percentage of kids who are, who are taking accelerated courses, who are on free and reduced lunch, would increase over time. And I would, I would expect that PineView would get more diverse as a result of this. That's what I would expect as a goal. But again, I don't have a doctorate for my name, I have a CPA, so you guys can come with whatever goal you want. But that's Eric Robinson's expectation. And if I, and if I don't see that expectation, then I would hopefully, we can come back and talk about this again. Thank you.
No, and for me, Eric, I mean, I can't speak to PineView, of course, but part of our goal when we met even at Harvard is that we will see an increase across the board, not only elementary, middle, and high. ACE, IB programs that we have across our high schools. Because right now, my particular goal, as we discussed, and I reached out to all middle and high school administrators to kind of discuss, they knew, they already know that I'm on this particular committee. But the reality is, the number, the diversity within our schools, so Northport High School is a perfect example, where we said about 8% to 9% African-American, 10% to 12% Hispanic, and then the rest white, is that our ACE numbers do not match what our actual numbers are in our school. And so that is part of our goal as well, is that if our school looks a particular way, that our advanced coursework will also mirror that. It does not at this point. Hence why we have this committee. Because as of right now, our percentage sits around almost less than 1% of African-Americans that are in our ACE program in Northport High School alone. So there is work to be done.
And there is work to be done, and I really want to emphasize the impact of doing it at the elementary level. When we identify children at a young age and we put them in advanced work programs, it gives children time and opportunity to be able to handle those more advanced classes, particularly at the middle school and certainly at the high school level. There is a lot to be said with the work over time, with having children exposed and rigorously working through this coursework.
Shirley.
From my experience talking with my daughter, who has identified, I think, some children that she worked with that are gifted, talking with the parents in Title I schools, parents don't understand what it is, or parents feel threatened by it, because how are parents supposed to? If you've got a parent who is not making it and is, by definition, you know, low salary or low socioeconomic level, that probably indicates a lower educational attainment for those people. How are these parents then supposed to help their kids? I mean, my husband tutored someone that was threatened by a smart kid. So, you know, wanted this kid to dumb down and beat him down every time. So we have to do something about helping these parents to help these students because, or put some other help out there. And another thing is that it's not easy for the transportation. I'm not expecting a whole bunch of more kids from Title I neighborhoods to be going to PineView, because these are parents that sometimes don't have the transportation to get there. You know, so if they had something closer to their own neighborhood that they could provide, and I know at middle school level we do, high school's more so, but, you know, do we have some cluster sites, you know, by these, in these Title I school areas that these kids can get to? Because that, that transportation part is, I think, a key component. These parents want to be able to get to their kids' schools, want to be able to interact with the schools. But if they don't have transportation, because by definition, they have financial constraints on owning a car or anything else, I mean, that's something that I think we need to look at when we're looking at how we're going to serve these. Because why aren't we serving these? And why do parents back away from it? I think there's some real issues there, and I think we need to look at putting it in their schools to some extent, rather than making them go down to a, you know, getting on a bus and going 45 minutes or to an hour to get to school.
Caroline.
I think this is a great thing, because for many years now, I've known that we have gifted students that have not been identified. And I remember Ed James II coming to me when his son was young and saying, "My son, even though he's black, he's going to PineView because his brain, that's where he has to go." And it wasn't, it wasn't a natural thing then. So I'm really glad that we're doing this focus. But besides just going to PineView, we also have cluster sites. And the ACE program is also, and the IB program are also considered. So there's not such a thing as that we have to bus kids from ME Booker down to PineView. We have cluster sites that we can serve these students. But we need to identify them first so that then we can challenge them with the curriculum. Is that fair to say?
Absolutely. And for each of the comments, this, I said this to my amazing colleagues, this was never about strictly increasing enrollment at PineView. That wasn't our primary goal. As the principal, that's one of my areas of focus, but this committee's much larger. It looks at the 30,000-foot level for, for the district.
That is what I thought, but I didn't hear that just then. So I wanted to make sure that it was known that ACE and IB and the cluster sites that we have are nearer to the students, and they don't have to be bused so far away.
Students who are identified at the end of the process, they can elect to receive services at their districted school. So they don't even have to go anywhere. They can stay right where they are. They can choose to go to a gifted cluster site. These are the elementary students. Or they can choose a gifted magnet program. When they're older, in upper grades and high school, they have the opportunity to elect advanced coursework in many, many ways, online, SVA, ACE, IB, lots and lots of opportunities that this wonderful district provides.
Also, if we identify a large number of students from one school that we believe should be challenged...